Thank you all for being here. I apologize for my video. I can't get my video working tonight, so you're just gonna hear my voice, but I won't be on too much, so that's okay. Tonight, you're gonna be learning about the candidates running for Isaguas School Board. I'm Lindsay Pinkston. I'm the Highlands Council Community Program Manager. Highlands Council serves the Isaguas Highlands community separately and in addition to our Homeowners Association. We do a variety of things to build community in Isaguas Highlands, candidates for local elections just being one of them. Tonight, I'd like to thank everyone who has helped to make this event possible. Our moderator Carolyn Kennedy, who you'll meet in just a minute. Our meet and greet room hosts Kimberly Cappastin, Kristy Garrard, Vicki Greenwald, and Katie Cannon. Our timekeeper Chelsea Music, our video producer Katie Cannon, and of course, all of you from the community who submitted your questions for the candidates tonight. Tonight's event will be a moderated Q and A session, followed by a meet and greet session where you can get to know the candidates more informally. And now it's my pleasure to introduce our moderator for tonight's forum, Carolyn Kennedy. Carolyn is a 14-year resident of Isaguas Highlands and has parented kids through every level of the school district, with two kids now at Isaguas High School. Carolyn has been a dedicated schools volunteer, including serving on PTSA boards and two years as co-president for Grand Ridge Elementary PTSA when her kids were young. After serving on the Isaguas Schools Foundation Board for several years, she now serves as Director of Programs. Please welcome Carolyn Kennedy.
Thank you, Lindsay. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the candidate forum for the Isaguas School Board. Thank you, candidates, for attending today, and thank you to the Isaguas Highlands Council for hosting this forum, and thank you to everyone for attending. Strong schools make for strong communities, so I love to see lots of people attending these forums for our candidates. Before we hear from the candidates, I want to do a high-level overview of the role of the school board. The board is created and operated pursuant to Washington State law and is the public's voice in public education. The board sets the vision, mission, and goals for the district and monitors the district's progress toward these goals. The board hires and evaluates the superintendent, reviews, revises, and adopts operating policies, establishes and oversees the financial affairs of the district, and they serve as community representatives. We polled the community to find out which topics were most important and grouped them to create overarching questions for use this evening. After two-minute introductions and opening comments, we will begin the Q and A. Each candidate will be given two minutes to answer their question, and I will alternate who will answer each question first. Keep in mind, this is a forum, not a debate. Therefore, there will not be a targeting of opponents, and answers will not, there will be no rebuttals. Time will be strictly monitored. Our timekeeper will sound a chime when you have 20 seconds left and another sound at the end of your time. Chelsea, would you like to play those again right now, just to make sure we know everyone, everyone knows what those sounds are? 20 seconds? And it's two minutes. If you aren't done at the time's up, or you don't happen to hear the sound, you're in the midst of a passionate comment, I will need to cut you off and make sure that we have equal time for all the questions. So now, let's meet the candidates running for Isaguas School Board Director. Thank you, Marnie Maraldo, Robin Poe, Dr. Wendy Kiora, and Sidney Mullings for coming tonight. Rather than take precious time to read their bios for each candidate, I refer you to the candidate biographies listed on the King County Elections website. Lindsay, I believe you were gonna put that information in the chat for everyone. After I introduce each candidate, they'll have two minutes to present an opening statement at this time. So I will start with District Two, Marnie Maraldo. Thank you for coming. Your two-minute opening statement, please.
Great. Thank you so much to the Isaguas Council for providing this time to share with the community our goals and around running for the school board and being available to share our visions. My name is Marnie Maraldo. I've been serving on the Isaguas School Board since 2009, when my son was in fifth grade and my daughter was in first grade. Both my kids receive special services from the district, and it is at the core of my mantra that I'm sure the board is sick of hearing, "But that all means all, and that's all all means." Over my time on the board, the district has made positive strides in addressing the needs of students who come to our schools with more barriers in their learning. And I'm especially excited about our district's current work moving towards including students with special accommodations into classrooms with their peers who do not have those same type of accommodations. Another area where I'm looking forward to the success with the district's work is addressing the needs of students with dyslexia. But there's definitely more that we need to do in this area. Of course, given the past year and a half, I feel we need to move from looking at our students more broadly, from looking at them more broadly, to looking at the needs of each and every student. The pandemic has been difficult, to say the least. Some students fared okay, and some even thrived while participating in remote learning. But we know that so many students have been impacted, have struggled, and have fallen behind. We need to spend the next several years, helping students to catch up, to feel confident in their learning. The other area of focus for the board is the restoration of our relationships with the adults in our system, both our staff and our neighbors. It seems everything in our world is so divided, but our students are best served when we align ourselves with our collective goal, providing all students with a strong, effective education that will set them up to reach their full potential. My goal is to work towards rebuilding trust within our district. So thank you for your time, and I hope by the end of the evening, you will feel more informed as you make your election decision.
Perfect. Thank you, Marnie. Also for District Two, Robin Poe. Robin, a two-minute opening statement, please.
Okay, my name is Robin Poe. I decided to run for school board because I wanted to get more involved in the community, and I have a great deal of passion for the education of children because having mostly worked in the technical, you know, technology industry. I'm a network engineer at a major mobile phone company. And I've seen, like, as, I think there's an importance in learning things that will help them be able to get jobs in these growing industries, like technology and, you know, science and, well, again, just anything that has to do with technical things because, you know, it's like something they need to do. And so my big interest is in science, technology, mathematics, and also the arts and engineering, but also the arts, especially the language arts. I think a lot of problems in society are because we do not know how to communicate effectively. And I'm an engineer, so I should know how it's difficult to communicate effectively. And also, I really think that one of the important things is kind of getting back to the Aristotelian approach to education.
You actually had 20 more seconds if you would like to finish your thought.
Okay, it was just the Aristotelian approach to education that used to have, where there was a lot of emphasis on working out your problems logically, using reason, and...
Okay. Thank you very much. Now for District Four, Dr. Wendy Kiora. Two minutes opening statement, please.
Okay. I love the Isaguas community. Board members here have many duties, such as evaluating the superintendent, creating policies, and approving budgets. I am well-qualified in all these areas. However, as a teacher and school principal for over 34 years with a doctorate in educational leadership, teaching young people and finding the key to their success is my passion. I'm the only candidate with teaching and educational leadership experience. One of the reasons I'm running for school board is to ensure all the students who got lost and fell behind during Zoom classes last year will be given the extra help needed to get caught up in all academic areas. I am your back-to-the-basics candidate. Currently, there are plans at the state level to lower the goals and expectations in all academic classes. Switch to a pass/fail grading system and cut all the gifted classes. This year, parents are already asking me, "Why is my child not being given homework anymore?" To achieve equity, school districts are considering lowering our academic standards, even though most studies have shown that disadvantaged students who take challenging courses perform well academically, graduate on time, are successful in college, and find great jobs. Transitioning these students into higher-quality, more rigorous curriculum provides a higher degree of student success in college than almost any other reform. According to a 2020 USA Today article, the U.S. ranks ninth in reading and 31st in math out of 79 countries tested. Parents move to Isaguas because of the excellence and quality of education they expect from our schools. I stand for keeping them improved and not to diminish that quality. I will fight to keep the quality and standards high in every classroom for every child. To achieve these goals, I ask for your vote, Dr. Wendy Kiora, for school board. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Also for District Four, Sidney Mullings. Two-minute opening statement, please.
Thank you, and thanks so much for inviting me tonight. I'm excited to be a part of this fantastic forum. I would love to take this opportunity to share a bit about myself and give you an understanding of why the work of the Isaguas School Board is so important to me. I'm Sidney Mullings, and I proudly served on the ISD Board since 2019. I was appointed to the board with a vacancy following an extensive application and interview process in the spring of 2019. I was unduly elected in November of that same year. I have an undergrad degree in international politics from Penn State University and a master's degree in human-computer interaction from DePaul. I have a long history of nonprofit board governance focused on eradicating homelessness in Chicago and supporting underserved youth here in the Puget Sound. I've worked in tech for over 20 years, and my family relocated to Isaguas here in the Highlands in 2014. With two children in the Isaguas schools, I'm deeply committed to ensuring that all of our students have access to exceptional educational experiences. Throughout my time on the board, I've studied each topic and issue deeply, asked questions for understanding to help make what I believe were the right decisions to serve our students, staff, and community. After the last two years, I can say with certainty that I have the right skills, commitment, and resilience needed to continue to serve this community as a member of the Isaguas School Board. All of these characteristics, I believe, will be needed, as we have much work to do, to ensure that we're taking all the needed steps to keep our schools open, identify and reverse any learning loss that our children have experienced in the last 18 months, and repair the seams in our community as we rebound from what's been a polarizing time. I bring both balanced perspective and a drive for forward progress. It's been an honor to serve on the Isaguas School Board, and I look forward to continuing my service with your support.
Thank you so much. So thank you to each of you for your introductions, and we will now move to the question-and-answer session of the evening. With four candidates in one hour, there's a lot to try and fit in. So I'll start with question number one, which relates to challenges and priorities. What do you see as the biggest challenge faced by the district right now, and how would you address it? And what do you think the priority should be for the coming year? I'm gonna start with Marnie on this question.
Great, thank you. I think right now, our biggest challenge is the recovery of any learning loss for our students. Each one is at a different point. Usually after a school year, most students are learning the same amount of material, and we can measure where they've, how they've accomplished over the past year. That's been really difficult to do over the past year. Some students have learned really well. They thrived in that online environment. Some struggled but had enough support around home, and some didn't do well at all. And not usually, and some of them are not even the typical students that do well. So we don't know where each student is at. So I think the biggest focus will be in addressing the needs of each individual student, being able to determine where they're at for each class, especially for our kids that are in secondary, that are taking several different classes, being able to work with adults to be able to find out where are they at, where are the holes, and how do we fill them. So I think that some of the priorities in doing that will be how we address meeting those needs, looking at after-school support, pull-out services, summer school. So we did offer summer school for free for students this past year and provided transportation, so it's breaking down those barriers so they can access the supports that we want to provide for them. And we're gonna have to really do a measurement of where is each student at to be able to assess where those gaps are and how we can move forward.
Thank you so much, Marnie. Robin, I'm gonna ask you that same question next. Let me know if you'd like me to repeat it.
No, that's fine. One of the things, you know, again, this is a new position that I'm going for, and I know that a lot of the students have been handicapped by the online learning last year. Some children don't do well at that. Some students don't do well at that. I think the best approach would be to focus on the basics, because if they don't have the basics, you know, the math, the reading, the science, and all of their classes, the classes that are very core, that, you know, they're gonna end up coming up short. And also, I think one of the things you can do is there are a lot of online learning opportunities, you know, for, like, just looking up afterwards. There's like tons of courses out there where they're like short mini-courses. If they're having trouble with mathematics or chemistry or whatever, there's like, some of them are more college-oriented, but they do have some, like Wolfram, that has courses on more specialized areas, that we should look at those resources that are available. And also, I think it's important not to make children who are a little behind feel like they're kind of needing, you know, it's like, don't make them feel like they're kind of held back, or there's something wrong with them. And just make sure that we don't, like, try to emphasize that they're, like, not doing well. In other words, try to be more positive about it, and that's what I...
Thank you so much. Sidney, I'm gonna go to you next.
Thank you. You know, I think this is the question, right? Every year has challenges. This one has significant challenges as we look to get back to our in-person learning environment. I think that Marnie did a nice job talking about learning loss and our need to get an evaluation assessment of where each student is and create individual plans to make sure they can progress. I'd say the thing I would build on that is, you know, we really do have to make sure that as children return, that they are focused on, that we are focused on providing the supports, both mental health and social-emotional. But I'm gonna wrap all that, and we can't do any of those things if we don't do what I think is the most important, and that's really make sure that we can keep our school buildings open. And so I think what is of paramount importance for us now is making sure that we are very carefully following all of our protocols, that we're doing an assessment and analysis of where we see issues and concerns, that we are staying in touch with all of our federal, state, and local mandates, as well as our local progression of COVID-19 in the schools, and really ensuring that we provide the safest environment for our staff, for our students to be operating in during this time. So what my role in that is making sure that I'm staying abreast of all of those, the guidance that we have, that we're bringing into our conversations, people like Seattle King County Public Health, that we're reviewing the numbers and statistics on an ongoing basis and looking for any areas that we can make improvements in our process, and recommending update to those conventions where they're needed. So that's my answer.
Thank you so much. Wendy?
I agree with the other candidates that have said that catching the students up to where they should be is probably the biggest priority for our schools right now. There were so many parents that I spoke with that told me how much, how many problems their student had doing the remote learning classes at home. And these were parents that were there with the children, trying to help them. So I can imagine what it was like for children that had no parent in the home. So those students were possibly even behind at the end of last school year, and then they had another whole year of Zoom where they got further behind. And they joined their classmates, and I spoke to someone at the district level who told me that this district did not plan to do any remediation at the beginning of the year, but just to start everybody at their grade level. This is okay for the kids that stayed up with where they should be, but it's extremely frustrating to any child that goes into a class and sees how far behind they are from their classmates. And it gets worse and worse as the year goes on. This is something that needs to be caught right at the beginning of the school year and taken care of. I think that the school should start immediately to have extra tutoring or pull-out classes to bring all those students up that are behind, especially in reading, writing, and math, as those are the core subjects. In the future, looking for priorities, I think one of the priorities might be to have teacher-coaches to help teachers that are new or maybe having difficulties teaching children, and they can engage them in the best methods to get everybody interested and really wanting to learn. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Will you all hit on a specific area? So I'm gonna actually mix up my questions a little bit and move to what I was originally gonna put as question four, relating to academic support, as you all brought it up during your priorities discussion. It is a big topic after 18 months of mostly distance learning. What do you think most needs to be done to support students who need special dispensation, special education, IEPs, et cetera? And what do you think needs to be done to support all students academically? And how would you go about promoting these ideas? I'm gonna start with Wendy.
Okay. As far as academic support, I heard at the town hall meeting for the school board that the Special Education Department is extremely understaffed, and there have been many complaints by parents about this. And if we're going to be educating all students equally, then we must not forget the students that need the help the most, which is our special education students. So I believe that getting that handled, starting to do recruiting way back in March for the coming school year would be a great idea so that you have no problem with staffing the following year. And as far as academic support for all the other students, I think that there should be tutoring offered by the school before school, after school, pullouts, whatever it takes to get those kids caught up. And this should be done in the most engaging way possible, using best practices that teachers can use, using nonfiction materials that are of high-interest level to students, has proven to be the best method to get them reading and more literate. And we need to do whatever it takes so that we give all of our students the tools that they need so that by the time they graduate, they can do whatever it is that they choose to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Sidney?
Thanks. Yeah, I think, as I said in my opening, I think it's a really important question. And I think in your question, you asked a couple parts, right? So what about students in different categories, and then what is our role in ensuring that we can have a plan and get support for that plan? So I think the first one is actually the same thing. I think all of our students need an individualized plan. And to get to an individualized plan for each of our students, that would require early in-school-year assessments, which I know many of which are underway, early in-school-year conversations with students, with parents, and teachers to understand where really are the gaps for each individual student, and then what is the plan? Is that additional coursework? Is that additional online training? Is that additional support services or groups that they can join for support? I think what's really important is understanding, though, that regardless of what circumstance, it really is an individual plan that each student needs, and I wouldn't make any difference between, you know, some category of students. I think what's important, though, is what you talked about in how will I gain support? How will I drive connection? A really big part of the board, what's important to know, is one person can't make any decision. It's really about being a collaborative entity, about working along with board peers, around working along with the administration of the district. So one, do we have the right assessments, and can we look at that data and really disaggregate it and make sure we understand what's happening? Can we look at the plans that we have in place, and do those plans require funding or additional support or other budgeting concern? And coming together as a group to ensure we have a good and strong plan forward. And collaboration skills is frankly one of my strengths and one I've had on display for the last couple of years, and I would look forward to continuing to have those conversations to ensure we have the right support programs.
Thank you. Robin?
One of the things I, useful is, we know there's gonna be, like, different weak subject areas that people are gonna have. Some people are gonna be, it's hard for them to read, or it's hard for them to do math, or whatever their subject area is that they just couldn't quite perform as well when they were, like, on remote learning. It seems like, if you could just, like, kind of say, "Okay, here's what we're gonna do for the people who are having difficulty in this subject area. Here's what we're gonna do for the people that were having difficulty in this subject area." And so then, it's not like the child feels like they're just like this odd person who can't do something, you know? It's like, they're gonna be a group of them, then he'll know it's, they're not, it's not just one person that's having trouble. He'll know, it's not like, they'll feel like they're part of a group because, you know, they say, "Oh, well, all these other people had trouble too, so I don't feel so bad." And I think that would be a kind of a good approach, you know? And so, like, you could have, like, maybe a remedial class on this, and, you know, and then work again with the parents, saying which group would, which would go with this, like, extra class, or which would go with that one, and find out what would work the best for the parents as well. And, you know, it's like, this is a really hard thing. And I think that it's important to make them feel like, "This is not any reflection on you. It's just, this is what we were dealing with last year, and we're gonna do our best to help you."
That's great. Thank you. And Marnie?
I would agree. This is a really important topic and question. And as somebody who had kids that had IEPs, it is imperative that the district ensure that we are going through. So I think one of the things that we're doing is looking at all of those IEPs, having meetings at the beginning of the year, where are some of the continued work that needs to be done, and evaluating those students, and looking at what are some specifics. So I would leave that to our Special Education Services team to do those evaluations. I would agree, we are struggling with not having enough special ed teachers. It's not a funding. We have openings. So if you know anyone who has that special certification, but that's a nationwide problem. Every single, every single school district is struggling to get special education teachers because people are not becoming teachers and getting that special certification. So that's something we will continue to work on. So what we're doing is, I think, staff members that have that certification, that are administrators, are helping with those as many ways as we can. So a continued focus on recruitment and on actually encouraging people to go into that sector as well, the sector of education. I think, though, the other piece is, how do we support all students? Because right now, much to what Director Mullings was saying, looking at every student from a lens of an individual plan, where are they at with those specific topics? They could be struggling in math, doing well in English, so how do we get them those supports? I think we, having opportunities during the class day, so I think something where if, you know, you have an extra math class that you can take, that can be a math support class, doing things outside of class time, whether it be during lunchtime, during, before and after school, or during the summer, are other ways that we can take those opportunities to help students catch up.
Great, thank you. So now I'm gonna move to a question that was probably unavoidable about the pandemic, and it is two parts. What are your specific views on COVID mitigation? And given the division in our community that the pandemic has created or uncovered, what is your plan to help heal the divide and make sure that all stakeholders feel their voices are heard? I'm gonna start with Sidney.
Yeah, thank you. Can you hear me? Okay, I got the "I meet myself" message. So, you know, this one for me is incredibly personal. I have two children that I send to ISD buildings every day. I, I have a personal connections to families that have had long-term impacts from, from COVID. I think it is incredibly important, and that's why I brought it up as my most important thing, that what we are doing is following a multi-layered systems of support, systems of mitigation that ensures that we can do our best job to keep COVID as limited transmission within our, within our school buildings. So very specifically, what is my view? I, I am in support of vaccination, masking, good ventilation, social distancing, where we can do that, high level of cleaning. I believe that all of those steps are critical and important because each layer, while none is perfect, each layer does the job of ensuring that we can keep our staff, our students, and folks in our building as safe as we possibly can. Unfortunately, this has been a divisive topic, and that has saddened me over the course of the last couple of years. What I've learned in this process is every person is operating from a place that, that is genuine to them. But each perspective is about what is safe and what they believe is best for their family and for their student. And for that, I respect it deeply. And so what I've done and what I've continued to do is listen to each message, each perspective, and try to do the best of understanding where is that individual coming from? What matters to that family? And then figuring out how we drive for plans and protocols that keep our greater system as safe as we possibly can. Thank you.
Thank you, Sidney. Wendy?
Okay, so as far as mitigation, I've done some reading on this. And what I've heard from people and reading, including from Dr. Fauci, is that the masks that most people wear do not prevent the virus from entering into the mask and into your face. The only masks that actually can do that are the ones that are surgically fitted for doctors and professional people in the medical field. If it makes certain people feel safer by having children and adults wearing masks, then that's, that should be what they do. I, I believe that young children should not have to wear masks. They have a below a point oh, 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 one percentage of contracting the disease. And when they do, it's pretty mild. I've had personal experience with COVID. About three months ago, I lost my son-in-law to COVID. And my daughter and three children all got the virus. And they, thank God, were fine. They got a mild cold and were okay after a couple of days. So it's not anything I take lightly. I personally have been vaccinated, but that was my choice. I have some underlying health issues that made it the right choice for me. For people that are young and healthy and have a great immune system, it is not more dangerous than the regular flu. In fact, medically, it is less dangerous.
Okay, thank you very much. Marnie?
I think for me, the first part of the question, one of my specific views about COVID mitigation is that no single one works alone. And I've often seen a picture of Swiss cheese. Each one is a mitigation, but it has holes. But as you layer them, one can cover up some of the holes of the other one. So it's much to what was discussed before, having face masks, vaccinations, social distancing, great ventilation. When you start adding all of them up, it is a better layer of protection. Nothing's perfect. This virus is coming after us with a, with a passion. So we have to do the best we can, and it's our responsibility to provide opportunities for students to be in the classroom. So whatever our mitigations are, layer them on so that we can ensure that we can have students and staff members safe coming into our schools. And that has got to be the number one priority, and it has been. The, the, the board has always looked to the Department of Health in the state of Washington. Myself and another board member have meet monthly with Public Health of Seattle, King County members there about how do we make sure that we're staying safe at school? Asking further questions as we go through the process of trying to open up our schools again. We're open now, and the goal is to stay open. And I think that's the plan to heal the, the divide is, is much to what Sidney was saying, is understanding people have different perspectives of this and what, how it's impacted their family, what concerns them. And I think that much of what we've seen that the passion people have around that is through the concern for their health and safety one way or the other. And some of that is mental health, some of that is physical health. And we have to be able to understand and listen to all those perspectives and provide the safest environment possible.
Great, thank you. And Robin?
Oh, I am. I've been hearing all through the whole COVID season, you know, starting in two twenty, actually January of two twenty, all the way through, I keep hearing people saying, follow the science. And I just roll my eyes and say, oh, if only they would. You know, it's just, there is so much misinformation out there. And one of the things I want to say, first off, that the child's health is primarily the responsibility of the parent. Okay? Now that being said, one of the, in March, or April of 2020, the NIH came out and said, and this is, and this actually makes mathematical and scientific sense that the, the main way that the, the the COVID virus is transmitted is in surfaces. So it's like, you're not, very, very tiny, tiny bits go through the air. Nothing hardly goes through the air. It's surface trans, you touch a surface, they get that on them, and then they touch their face, or they touch another person, or, you know, it's surface transmission. And so I think the, the main thing that we, you need to focus on in the schools is sanitation, washing your hands, keeping the surfaces clean. You might even have just a little standard practice that everybody wipes down their, their desk at the beginning of the day with a little wipey, or something like, just a kind of a tradition. Oh, and as far as the vax goes, I followed it from the beginning. There is no reason a child should have this vaccine.
Okay. I'm going to move on to our fourth question. It is related to diversity, equity, and inclusion. Over the past ten years, our district has undergone huge shifts in demographics. How do you plan to ensure that every student and family in our district feels seen, respected, and included, and thus able to take full advantage of the educational opportunities provided? I'm going to start with Robin.
Okay, I've, I've actually thought about this a lot. And these are probably very old-fashioned ideas. But the best way to make people feel included is courtesy and respect in the classroom, on the playground. And also, the other thing is like, if they don't have a very good command of English, it's important that they get, I know they used to do this, I don't know if they still do it now, but to get proper English as a second language during the summer before they start school, or an accelerated program if they start the school in the middle of the year. And also, a lot of it is just understanding other people and, and being kind. You know, there's so much of it. You know, if, if people could just be kind and show respect and courtesy to everyone, treat everybody the same, you know? And, and if somebody gets to be picking on somebody or, or something like that, you know, just the teachers need to intervene and stop it. I, I mean, I had a nephew, he's a dwarf, I mean, like a really little dwarf. And so they didn't think he would be able to mainstream because he was a little slow learning too. But they were able to mainstream it, and they did a lot to, you know, educate the other children about differences and like how we can be friends and be kind to people and understand that somebody may have a problem with something and try to help them. And, you know, be respectful, courtesy, helpfulness to their fellow students. And I think that's the best approach.
Great, thank you. Marnie?
This is something that has been a part of my focus as a school board member for most of my time, is how do you, how do you ensure that every student and family feels seen and feels respected? And I think it's by focusing on that, each and every student, on having a, a place where they can, a school environment where they can feel welcomed and included and seen for who they are. Much of the work that we've done as a board lately has been doing listening sessions. I think we've done them for the past three years, although we've, we're much limited during COVID what we could do. But to talk to students, let them have a chance to talk to us, meeting with them, talking with families, specifically families from our, that are parents of color, or their students are students of color. We've, we've worked with our outside organizations like Isqwa Schools Foundation to provide more access to information in multiple languages. We've worked with them, and we now have a welcome to the American school system because many of our students come from, their families come from outside the US. And you come into the US, and how in the world can you navigate that? And that's kind of giving them the information that those of us that grew up in, in the United States that, you know, for me, a suburban mom, I kind of know how the system works. So how can we provide them the same level, the same opportunity when they go into the classroom? Another thing that the district, I think, does really well, that they were the first to do in the state, really, now other districts do, is by providing things such as highly capable programs for secondary, making the informed self-select, where it's up to the student and the family to decide, am I going to push myself and take an advanced class? And we see a large number of our students doing that, pursuing those stronger classes that have, are more academically rigorous and making that available to every student. No one, no one in the district is determining their future. They can, they can self-determine. And I think that's really, really important program to continue.
Thank you. Wendy?
So for equity and inclusion, I think the most important thing is to teach respect and kindness toward one another. The first job I had teaching was in the barrio of East Los Angeles. So ninety percent of the students in the school were Latino and Latina. And I had a class that, they used to have a class for 12th graders that was called Basic English. So these were the children that were 12th graders, but most of them were reading at about third grade reading level. And when I got the books delivered to my room, it was embarrassing. I mean, they were, it was degrading. These books were just so simplistic that I refused to give those books to the students. So during my lunch hour, I snuck into the faculty bookroom, and I brought, you know, a ruling cart full of books, Shakespeare and classics, and the books that the other 12th graders were reading. Because I wanted my students to have that same opportunity and be able to discuss these books with their friends. So we started with Hamlet. And I, first of all, taught them Shakespearean English, because it is actually a foreign language. It's not what we speak today. And they learned the fifty most commonly used phrases in Shakespearean English and practiced, they wrote skits in that language and did them with each other in front of the class. So by the time all the partners had shared that with the class, the kids knew the language. And they plowed right into the play and had no problem understanding it and loved it. And this is what we need to do in our schools. Instead of diminishing our education, we need to bring all of our students up to the highest level that they can achieve. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sidney?
Thanks. You know, I think this is an incredibly important question, and it's, it's frankly one of the questions that brought me to do this work in the first place. And one of the reasons why I became even interested in the school board is looking at getting involved in a group that was looking at disparities and discipline data within our system. And looking at really, you know, do we understand what's going on? Do we understand the different level of treatment that our students are, are experiencing our system? And after having, getting more involved there is where I decided to run for the, the school board. And those questions have continued to come up. As we talked about earlier, we've had a series of listening sessions over the last three years. That's with staff members, with teachers, with students, with their families. And I've really heard many, many stories about the othering of the people within what should be a tight community. And I think we, as a community, have to really absorb that we've got not only maybe interpersonal things to resolve of how we perceive each other, but clear operational challenges that we can and shouldn't have been addressing. When we look at things, you know, hearing a student say that because of her religion, she doesn't eat meat, yet at lunch, her, the utensils get commingled on the salad bar with meat, and that no one is listening to her, that's something that we can action. When we look at texts that we find in, in our libraries, do they have the stories, the families, the pictures of the students who come into our building? That matters. When we look at the front office or admin experience, when families come through the front door, and they feel whether they're welcomed in and helped, or they feel a chilly environment, those are all the things we need to look at when we talk about diversity and inclusion. And I think that's incredibly important work that we've started, a journey we've been on, and that I'm committed to keep going on.
Thank you very much. We are doing really well on time. I'm going to toss in one extra question. And Chelsea, let's make this just a quick one-minute answer for each candidate. The pandemic has really brought, in relief, the digital divide in our community, and I'm sure communities around the country. What would be your plan for fixing that issue? And I am going to start, I will start with Sidney.
Yeah, it's, it's really highlighted, the, the last eighteen, nineteen months has really highlighted, even in a community like ours, and obviously our, our district is many kinds of communities put together, but it's really highlighted even from simple things such as broadband access, how in this part of the state, we really don't have consistent broadband access. So regardless of what, what laptops we put in people's hands, what learning management systems we may deploy, I think we really have to work with our local technology partners, with our telcos, and really make serious inroads into broadband access so that we can connect all of our students, all of our teachers who had to teach at home and maybe didn't have access as well. So that would be my focus.
Thank you. Wendy?
I think that open communication with the parents would allow us to find out what is most needed and wanted in this area. I think that every student in our school system that cannot afford a computer should be given one by the school, a laptop that they can use at home. Also, during the pandemic, there were other schools that had the computers up and going at home with students, had computers for any student that needed one very rapidly. And for the families that could not afford internet, the school communicated with all the local businesses like Starbucks and got them to have their internet going out into the parking lot so that the students could be in the car and do their homework there and use that access to the internet, which may not be a good permanent solution, but it worked for that time and for that circumstance. So you have to be innovative and be able to just make everything right.
Thank you. Marnie?
I think that we did highlight that we need to have something more, more comprehensive that we do make laptops available, that every student should have, have access to a laptop, not only at home, but at school. But it also would require a level of professional development for our teachers to truly integrate that into the learning process so that they can anticipate how to use that. It's just like moving into the active boards. They weren't very, a very good resource until we taught the teachers the best way to use those and provided that professional development. So I think you'd have to do both of those, and very much the broadband issue. We issued hotspots, I think five hundred hotspots when we, during the pandemic, so we would have to do something similar.
Great. And Robin?
Yes, um, one of the, one of the things that's important to remember when you, you have like, like an online situation with the students is making sure that you have really good tech support. Because if something happens, the computer breaks or something, then they're missing the whole class while they're trying to get this fixed. Because if something happened, the computer breaks or something, then they're missing the whole class while they're trying to get this fixed. So very responsive tech support is important when you have you know, a lot of online type of classes. And the other thing too is, is there a possibility that some of these people who can't afford like, you know, like high, high broadband, you know, or high bandwidth internet connections? Can they get like some kind of a credit, like to help pay for their costs? I don't know if that would be, there might be something worth looking into. Cause like most, most people have a pretty good connection, but there will be.
Okay. Well, thank you so much for answering all the questions and, and sticking with my extra little one thrown in there at the end. We'll now give you each an opportunity for a one-minute closing statement. Robin, I'll start with you.
Hey, um, one of the things that I, I I think is important is to make sure that we're not incorporating educational areas that tend to detract from the fact that we are Americans. And I, I've just seen too much where people think that America's bad and all this. And we need to make sure that our education up and especially history upholds the true America and and also, you know, I, I, we should not have communistic associated training in our classroom. And make sure that people are able to adapt to our, our regular American society. I mean, if you turn people against it, you're going to be creating a lot of dissidents and stuff. Anyway, that's all I have to say.
Okay, Wendy?
Thank you to our gracious hosts. The school board plays a critical role in determining the policy that will improve the education of all our children. We are fortunate, our community considers education to be paramount. If elected to the ISQAS School Board, I will ask in-depth questions about policy and programs to understand the value they will bring to the classroom. I will listen to the concerns of our community and work collaboratively with fellow board members to improve our schools. I'm the only candidate with teaching and educational leadership experience. I will not allow the education, the quality of our education to be diminished. My top priority will always be the continuous improvement in the quality of teaching and learning in every classroom for every child. It would be an honor to serve on the ISQAS School Board. I ask for your vote on November 2nd, Dr. Wendy Giora for ISQAS School Board. Thank you.
Thank you. Sidney? Sidney? Apologies.
No worries. Again, I'd like to thank you for having me today. It's been, it's been a great session. I hope that I've given you a good understanding of who I am and why the work in continued forward progress in the ISQAS School Board is so important to me. As my opponents made it clear, her focus is on taking us backwards. In her own words, she is our back-to-basics candidate. I'm excited about moving forward to ensure that our district provides exceptional educational experiences for all students. Thank you.
Thank you, Sidney. And Marnie?
I also would like to thank you for hosting this today and allow the public to find out who the school board candidates are and our, our views and our goals. I think it's very important for us to move forward that, that, that the community knows who it is that they're electing and knows about us. I think over the upcoming years, the expertise that I bring for my 12 years on the school board will be an important piece of recovery and, and helping students. So I would appreciate your vote on November 2nd. And that's Marnie Morales for the school board.
Thank you so much. Thank you to all of our candidates and all of our attendees for joining us this evening. Little extra information, ballots will be mailed out October 13th and are due by November 2nd for this year's general election. All voters in the ISQAS School District vote for all school board director positions regardless of where they live. So to be sure to get your ballot in by November 2nd. And we really thank you all for attending.